In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 1046, PL 1975, C-231-S-1, amended 206, C-70-S-2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and the New Coaster on January 4th, 2019 by email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January 4th, 2019. Our mission statement is that the Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society. Mr. Hastings, roll call, please.
Ms. Breach, Mr. Grillo, Ms. Jones, Mr. Lotaraca.
Here.
Ms. Lozinski.
Here.
Mr. Pinkney.
Here.
Mr. Saunders, Ms. Etienne.
Here.
Ms. Alvez Anderson.
Here. Please stand before the主席.
(inaudible) of the United States of America. (inaudible) one nation under God. (inaudible).
Mr. Lotaraca, are you prepared to report out on finance, would you please?
Finance Committee met on August 14th. We are rolling out the Kronos Time Management System. This is a system that's going to replace the old just sign-in sheet so there'll be better accountability, that all employees are reporting to work in a timely fashion. Our second point, Kelly Educational Staffing was awarded the bid for substitute teachers. The past, we've used Source for Teachers. Our third point regarding Taxpayer's Guide to Educational Spending and noting our overall cost per student at over $42,000. I alluded to this a little bit last night as to what their methodology is. We, and I don't think we know it completely, whether they're including $10 million that goes to charter schools, whether they're including grant funding, but as we move forward as a board, we're looking at a figure that's in the range of $26,000 per student of taxpayer funding, and that's what we need to look at as we're aware the average is, you know, lower than that. But we're, we need to be able to present to the public who, and there are certainly some individuals out there who already climbed on to the 40,000-plus figure. Point number four, we will have a Q-SAC review in the 2020 school year, and then we did have general discussions. There was an article in the Tri-City News about the school district and the funding issues, and the publisher of the Tri-City News presented his potential solution in what he called regionalization. And Ms. Morris noted, I mean, as you can imagine, there's talk of regionalization throughout New Jersey on school districts, cities, every, you know, that's, we don't want to come out as saying, oh, we'd be against looking at things like that, but it's extremely difficult. It's been done nowhere. The issues are extremely complex. We feel like as we move forward, we need to work more locally and see things that we can accomplish that are within our control, our own city government's control, and unless the legislature really lays out the roadmap and mandates things, it's difficult to see how regionalization can occur quickly. We also did want to follow up that this insurance broker is connecting with Mr. Hastings and doing what was promised in the response to the RFP. And we also noted that there was a press release, press release from our state senator on additional funding for special education. He noted districts that were receiving more funding, including Asbury, and I think the figure was over $400,000. But we, as a district, are yet to get confirmation of what that funding would be and whether it could favorably impact our funding situation now. And that concludes the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Lotaraca. And if I recall also during that Finance Committee meeting, State Monitor had commented that it would be a long process in the regionalization. If we were to look at that, and in addition to that, children that would come to our district, we would get 70% of the kids from the surrounding area, but that would also increase the taxes in this area. Am I correct there, Mr. Hastings?
No, I believe the article we noted said that if the district were to be consolidated with other municipalities, that Asbury Park would represent 70% of the population, and the impact that could have on the tax rate in the city could be effectively doubling or tripling what it currently is.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings. Madam Vice President, would you report out on Buildings and Grounds, please, as a chairperson?
Sure. At Buildings and Grounds, we discussed we had no facilities requests. We did receive a grant for cameras, and we'll be looking at replacing some of the cameras at Thurgood Marshall Bradley. We got three responses to the ESIP RFP, and I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, wait. Yeah, there was one more thing. We did discuss that the city may potentially be looking at a building to relocate the fire department, and that we talked about maybe having them look at the Buildings and Grounds building.
Thank you. Ms. Lozinski, policy.
I had a question, though, for Buildings and Grounds. Did you discuss the two comparisons between moving Central Office to Barack Obama versus renovation and the maintenance building? Did you have a discussion about that?
I didn't have further discussion on that because I haven't received those numbers yet.
And I believe that we will be going into executive session.
If we're going to do that, thank you, Madam President. If we're going to do that, it should be under, this is with respect to negotiations for property, is that correct? I mean, Obama's an existing school, but there's another site as well in the mix, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we'd have to discuss that in close, just to make sure that none of our discussions as a team are compromised publicly. Okay? I mean, I'm not saying none of it can be discussed. The fact that we're having the conversation is fine, but we should discuss the details back in closed session, just to not jeopardize our position. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Chair of Curriculum and Instruction, Mr. Pinkney.
Okay, some of our highlights that we discussed, we're continuing our visual and performance art focus with our partnership with Disney. We will be performing Aristocrats this year, Aristocats this year. The certification of security staff that is done every two years, we must certify security. Yearly Junior Achievement Program focused on career readiness, career awareness, and planning to provide foundational skills in the workplace. Year Two of Empowerment Project for Building and Sustaining Healthy Schools and Support Youth and Parent Engagement. The grant provides us with up to $15,000. The Make Music Count Sixth Grade Pilot Program, which combines music and keyboarding to support algebraic and math concepts. This will expand on our visual and performing arts offerings. Continuation of our relationship with the Conscious Youth Development and Services to provide yoga, SEO, and mindfulness. Schools have already budgeted for this. And also a continuation of middle school, of the middle school and OEDA International Ambassador Program. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkney. Good evening, Ms. Breach.
Good evening.
And I know you just arrived. Are you prepared to report out on athletics?
No, thank you.
I don't have the minutes because Mr. Moore was on vacation this week.
Okay.
So I just go from memory of Dr. Howard, help me out a little bit.
Put your mic on, please.
I don't want to. We met the other day, basically introducing our new athletic director, Mr. Gervino, whom everybody knows. Welcome to the Athletic Department. Just kind of get to know everybody. We're trying to do an inventory to see what we have as far as items for Homecoming, which is October 18th. So we're going to have an ad hoc with that, with a little, you know, once school gets back in session, we'll get our people together. And we have a food truck. I think we're going to go with the Caribbean Soul again, which is what we had last year, went over very well. They're going to try to expand a little bit on the Snack Shack. Our Booster Club is this close. We have to do, we have to have another meeting just to meet with the members from the Booster Club to get that up and running, if you want to.
Yeah, we're going to, the next, we're going to have a meeting, I think, the first week in September to get their 501(c)(3), and once they get their 501(c)(3), they'll be ready to go. They're recruiting heavily with the parents, so we want to get the alumni involved. They're also going to have a table at the Homecoming so that they can recruit for the Booster Club.
We also reiterated, we're going to seek out the advertising that we had a policy a couple of years ago, and we kind of backed off on it a little bit. We're going to try to go at that, go at that a little bit harder to try to raise some more money for our Athletic Department through the advertising, you know, with the banners and fences inside and outside. So we're going to really, this year, try to get that going up. Good. We also talked about, pardon?
Tell me what you.
Oh, I'm on the, I'm on, I'm on the Athletic Committee also. I finally made it to a meeting. We talked about selling T-shirts, maybe giving two promo T-shirts out at the beginning and having a table to be able to sell, and also the food truck would be selling food and soda, and we would be giving an opportunity for the classes.
Yes.
To sell water and Gatorade.
And snacks.
And smaller snacks, so that the students can make some money.
Are there any questions from any of the board members regarding the committee meetings, reports? All right.
I just have, I have one about curriculum, if I can cover it now. I was looking at, you made mention about this Music Counts program. There wasn't any backup, so I did look some it up, and apparently they did some work, they've done some work in Atlanta, Georgia, and it doesn't say, you know, what the results were, but there's an app that just came out last year, and I saw that on our agenda per student, we're being charged $7 a student. If you go on Apple, on your iPhone, it's $4 a student, so I was concerned that there was a, that's $3 difference per student for the application, so I was wondering if you could go back and find out what the discrepancy is. And the other information I had was, that I looked at is, with Atlanta, Georgia, I would assume other school districts, they were able to get a donation from Casio for keyboards, because you needed keyboards unless the students are going to use their iPhones or some kind of equipment that we do already. So I had a lot of questions, so I didn't know if there was additional information. And I was concerned about the difference in the app price for students, because when you go on the app, it says $4 per student, actually says per student. So I didn't know if you wanted to table it and go back and maybe ask about it, or...
We're going to be using our iPads as the keyboard, so the way that we had a vision using it was not purchasing keyboards, we were actually, oh, sorry, we were going to actually use the iPads that we were currently having all the buildings to be able to run the program, and we're also going to be running it after school, not just with the sixth graders, but also with the after-school program and the, and TLA, all the students in TLA. So that will give us three to, three to eighth grade, third grade to eighth grade usage. As far as the prices and difference, I can look that up for you and find out a little more information. I don't think, I think there's a difference. I'm not sure, this is what I assume it is, but I will make sure I find out. A lot of the licensed music that's used in the program that we're purchasing is very current, up-to-date, the kind of music our students listen to today. So I think that there may be an issue there with licensing of music that could be part of the difference in the price, but I will be sure to get you some more information.
Can we put that off until the next meeting, is it possible, so that we can get that information?
Well, the item, either way, we go with the program. The app, as you shared, on Apple versus the more current music, will not have a dollar amount that exceeds that, and we're using grant funds to cover it. So it's not going to ever exceed $7 per student. If it is the case that it's $4 for maybe, I don't, I want to say maybe last season's music, perhaps we can look at the $4 one, but that discrepancy in dollar amount is something that is newer information to me.
I was just concerned, I didn't want us to pay, you know, we're looking at a lot of budget cuts, and then every penny counts.
Right.
The other issue on that tends to be networking versions of the software versus personal versions of that software, so it could be a network security issue.
And you said it was grant-funded?
Yes. Yes, it's part of the enrichment component that we are required to provide.
My account numbers for general funds, 15, it says 15, so I didn't know if it was a grant.
Okay.
Instead of, what is it, 20 grants?
Yeah, the grants are out of the 20 fund, the schools are out of the 15 fund.
Yeah, it's under the school fund, so that was another concern I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lozinski. Any other questions? Public Participation in accordance with Board Policy 0167 is now open. No one's here, so it's closed.
Who? Let me say it, nobody's here.
Oh, yes, I said, nobody's here. And so, anyway, review of regular minutes, meeting agenda items.
Okay, starting with items on B1. Any questions? B8?
I had one question on B8.
Yes.
If I may. Is there any kind of summary of the impact that the YMCA program has, you know, like an update, how it went? I know we're renewing it, and I'm sure it's a good program, but, you know, sometimes it'd be to our advantage to get a report about how it's going or what kind of impact it's had on the students, so it gives us an idea of its continued success and how it does enrich the students' lives.
We can compile that information for you. B9?
I had a similar question in reference, number 18, in that, in that regard too, about getting an update, just so as a summary, how it went.
Dr. Howard, would you like to comment?
B18?
Yes.
It's Empower?
B9.
What's the question?
I just wanted to, a summary for the board as it's, how effective it was, and because we're renewing it, I assume this is a renewal.
Yeah.
So I just wanted a kind of an update about what it is, how it's, how it's benefited advantage to the students.
Okay, this was the whole community, whole child, whole school community, whole child that was held in the middle school. And our social worker, Ms. Sheldon Sanders, she worked with those students who had excessive absenteeism, and she also held a session for the parents, and they had, they had a large parent participation. So it was the first year, it was pretty successful, so we believe that now that a lot of the parents, there was a monetary component to it, so I think once parents kind of learned that, a lot of them became more interested, so I think this year they were going to have more parents.
It's after school, then?
Yes. Well, part of it, yes, is after school. Okay, any questions on item B10? B11?
Can I just go back one second? I just wanted to, I just, I know that there've been some concerns with some of the board members about, you know, the conference trips and stuff we've had through the years, and just wanted to, just so everybody knows, on B919, it's Title I funds, so it's not coming out of our general fund, so I assume it's something that, you know, is part of the Title I program, that, the trip to Pennsylvania.
Yes, that's our parent, our district parent involvement specialist that will be presenting.
To this agenda particularly, but I just wanted to follow up about the student rep.
Yes. I wanted to know what happened with the student rep. So the question is, our student rep that was selected, we met her, but she hasn't attended any meetings. Is that your question?
Correct. And was in charge of kind of mentoring her and reaching out to her and following up with her?
So with regard to that, it is the summer, and I know in the past, there were some employment issues, conflicts with work, the work schedule, but come September, we have planned to see if there's any way we can support her availability to be on that.
Do we have anyone designated to kind of follow up with her and do that?
We all have Principal Blomgaard to follow up with her, because it's a high school student.
Is there a way that we could have a, like a substitute, they could assign somebody just in case, you know, have somebody that comes and report back so that there is at least a representative? I have to re-read the policy and the regulation to see whether...
That's something I'm going to have to, you know, defer to the board on? In terms of the policy, if there's a stipulation after that.
I'll take, I'll take a look at it. I forgot whether we included something like that.
Exactly.
So, Ms. Lozinski, at your next policy meeting, if you could review it and then let us know, inform the superintendent.
I'll look at it tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
And I'll give her an email.
Okay.
And if we have to adjust it, we'll adjust it. We'll bring something to the board next month.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Hastings?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd take questions on any of the items from C1 through C3, and I would bring to the board's attention on C2, number seven, A and B, toward donations from AdPro, imprints of 60 Under Armour Heat Gear T-shirts for distribution to the students in the district, and the item B, which is a donation of school supplies from Mr. Pomeroy and Ms. Comey on behalf of Seabrook Village.
Any questions? Okay.
I had, I didn't have a question, I just wanted to point something out, and I, you know, the more we start looking at where money goes and stuff, and I, under the C1, number three pupil placement, one of the students from one of the charter schools is going to be placed in out-of-school placement, and I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, and then when the public ask questions, that it comes out of our district budget, it does not come out of the charter school budget. So, you know, it's additional funds that we are responsible for that goes into cost per student and things like that, so, and that's a good amount.
If I can't, Madam President, just so the board understands the process, so when a, when a charter school is, when a charter school places a student in some sort of placement, whether it be an out-of-district placement or wherever else, there's a unique process in place in the statutes and regulations that's designed for a similar child study team to meet at that school, and then when the, when the child is assigned, in many ways, they're playing with house money. You know, the, obviously, no matter what, as educational professionals, you want to make sure that the child is placed in the most, in the best fit for that particular child and to meet the requirements under the law, but there are, practically speaking, there are fewer financial considerations taken into account, because they're not spending their own money, they're spending your money. Now, you do have an opportunity to object to the placement if, after reviewing the considerations, you believe that it's not appropriate, but it's, it's difficult to make that challenge once a school team has made a determination. So the deck statewide is stacked against public school districts in that regard.
I just wanted to point that out, because it is an expense that, you know, we incur that adds to our financial obligations.
One of the things that we've done is I have made arrangements to meet at the charter schools whenever they consider that placement, and although I can't say no, we do try very hard to provide a program here first.
Any other questions?
Good. Can I just get a confirmation on travel and professional development? Again, what questions you start getting from the community at this point? My understanding, don't we every year kind of approve and say, with regard to taxpayer-funded budget, that travel and professional development is capped at $50,000 in the budget, or am I, am I dreaming?
Well, the district during its organization meeting adopts a travel resolution that stipulates approximately how much will be spent on PD. I would also point out that most of the PD is funded through the Title II grant for staff, so it is coming out of grant money for the most part.
I'd also like to just address also Mr. Lotaraca's question, because under, under the School Accountability Regulations, which is under 6823A, one of the largest sections in the entire large number of accountability regulations which went into effect, I think in 2011 or '10, there's a huge number of requirements for travel that make it incredibly burdensome and requires, before travel's just taken, to cut back on waste, there really has to be a demonstration that there's a linkage to program. There has to be prior board approval before any travel, if not, something wrong with this, there has to be prior board approval, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of checks and balances in place. I know you know that because you've been approving travel, but, but, you know, the Department of Education is very concerned about wasteful travel, which is why they have all these burdensome regulations.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'm just looking for one sentence to, to shut that down and get back to the bigger issues, and that's why I was, I think I was thinking of that, that budget. So if I said that, I'm not completely off-base.
No, you're correct in that there is a annual resolution that the board adopts regarding to the amount of money that's going to be spent, the maximum amount of money that'll be spent on travel, and as I said, most of it is funded through grants.
And also, in addition, doesn't the county superintendent have to approve out-of-state travel also? So there's another level of checks and balances before anything's approved by the board.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
I have a question. I wanted to go back to the addendum for B11. This, I wanted to ask about the initiative that, number two, if we can get an overview of it a little bit, since it is new, B11, on the superintendent's agenda?
Okay, thank you. That's the one that we're going to?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, if, that's something I might be able to provide you with some attorney-client advice on if possible, and we can do that discussion and close.
Understood, understood.
Yeah, so far I have two, just hearing what I'm hearing, I think, Madam President, we have two matters for close so far, is that correct?
Yes.
One's under the real estate exception, and one of them's under attorney-client privilege.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Just say that.
Yes, I just pointed out the donations, and if you had questions on any of the other items, we'd be happy to entertain those. Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Number five, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, I see.
Okay. So I need a motion to go into closed session for number three.
No.
No.
No. To go into closed session and receive attorney-client advice regarding number C3.
Mm-hmm.
Regarding C3, is that right?
Yeah.
Is that the number, C3?
It's, it's motion, it's resolution number eight, and we're going to close for item five, acquisition of real property, investment of funds, and seven, litigation or contract matters, attorney-client privilege.
Move what Jeff said. Yeah, thank you. All in favor? Second, all in favor, aye. Okay, we will be back by seven o'clock. In accordance with the provisions of Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 1046 PL 1975 C231 S1 amended 2006 C70 S2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and the New Coaster on January 4th, 2019 by email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January 4th, 2019. Our mission statement is that the Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society. Mr. Hastings, roll call, please.
Ms. Breach.
Here.
Mr. Grillen.
Here.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Lattaraca.
Here.
Ms. Lozinski.
Here.
Mr. Pinkney.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Satien.
Here.
Zabes Anderson.
Please stand with Wesley. Act of the United States of America, to the Republic of the States, one nation, one God, and universal, objective, justice, strong. Madam Superintendent, we have a presentation.
Yes, I'm delighted to have our Supervisor of Curriculum and Instruction, specifically focused on the area of bilingual education, Ms. Janice Kroposki. She will be reporting out our WEDA access and English language learner information, which is a requirement that this presentation be shared to the full board. So without further ado, Ms. Janice Kroposki and Jakey will be her clicker. I like that.
Good evening, Madam President, board members. Mrs. Gray, thank you. This is my son Jake. He's my sidekick tonight. He gets to press the button. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak about the WEDA access test, which is given every year to our English learner students throughout the district K through 12. The testing window begins in February and it lasts until April. And I am here just to report on the frequency scores for last academic year. All right. So just, the WEDA test measures four language domains as it relates to students and their level of English language proficiency. The first domain is listening, speaking, reading, and writing. Then a composite score is generated based on student responses for an overall score. So there are four main domains in the English language acquisition process for English learner students. As students begin to move through the proficiency levels from level one, being the absolute lowest score a student can achieve, to a level six, being the absolute highest score, there is a continuum of steps or procedures that a student can go through and an educator can go through in order to encourage academic growth, drive instruction, and ultimately promote student success. And that pyramid on the right-hand side is an example of some of the things that our educators are doing to ensure student achievement on the WEDA access test. There are certain definitions that our students need to know as it relates to English language acquisition. What they can, as in quotes there, can do descriptors that all of their teachers, not just their bilingual educator or their English language learner class educator, but all of their teachers should know what our students who are learning how to speak English can be expected to do as they are acquiring the language. There are also English language proficiency standards that we couple with the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. So there's a lot that goes into this compilation of scores. So by percentage, we have 190 English language students in district right now, 190. So these percentages are generated out of 190 students. And our languages, we have two main languages, as you probably already know. And 38% are speaking Creole and 61% are speaking Spanish, and we have two students who are speaking Arabic. So this is a distribution, again, by percentage of the 190 students. 53% of those students are in our elementary grades, 16% are in the middle school, and 31% are in the high school. So WEDA generates a district frequency report, and that's the testing company that we, the Department of Ed through in the state of New Jersey utilizes, along with 32 other states, to test English proficiency. And they generate a frequency report. The lowest level is a number one, which correlates to entering, they're just entering into learning. Today, I was just looking at the WEDA scores for the kindergarteners who are registered at Bradley, and they are all testing in the ones. All right, so they're at the bottom of the histogram. And eventually, as they move through our program, they will test out of our English language program by scoring a 4.5, that's the magic number, and they will not be on the histogram, they'll come out of the program. So the numbers at the top are smaller because the students who are at the top are testing out. But you can see the bands that are at the bottom and then in the middle are larger numbers, and our students are, you know, acquiring the English language as they move through our program. Any questions? Thank you, Sonny.
Madam Superintendent, your report, please.
Okay, so my, my report tonight will obviously be very different as the school is not in session. I want to just briefly touch on our Summer Steam Academy, which the Supervisor of Curriculum and Instruction had just presented to you on the WEDA data, also is responsible for coming up with the theme for this past Summer Steam Academy, which was Music to Our Ears. In addition to the English language learning and bilingual component, Ms. Kroposki also oversees visual and performing arts, as well as humanities, meaning social studies and English at the secondary level. And so when we, as a committee met to talk about the focus for this year's Summer Steam Academy, we took the research from one of our local community researchers, AMP, African American, the Asbury Park African-American Music Foundation, integrated the research that they've done here, right in Asbury Park, to highlight specifically the Black music contribution on Springwood Avenue. Over to your left is a table where you will find some pre-K to eighth grade pieces and artifacts from our Summer Steam Academy. Some of our students were so excited, as well as their families, when we had our Quad D exhibit to showcase the culminating projects. They have taken some of them home. So what we have left behind are some artifacts from our Summer Steam Academy specifically around how we teach social movements through art and music. Some of the artwork that you see, the visual art, is period artwork. Our students were focused on the time period of 1940 to 1970. We also know that the community is working on the commemoration for the 50th year of recognizing July 4th, 1970, here in Asbury Park. So what we sought to accomplish was a pilot program where we can begin to integrate and infuse the relevant history of African-American music in Asbury Park, as well as bundle it with what we understand and know as it relates to August 400 years ago, the arrival of 20 enslaved Africans in the United States. And so what has culminated in all of this work and this research is very relevant curricular design to engage our students pre-K to 8, and the pilot for that sits on the side table, some artifacts from that. So I'm very delighted that we are moving our innovative programming forward in a way that's culturally responsive, culturally relevant, and specifically locally relevant for our students and their families. And I want to thank Mr. Ruiz for his leadership as the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and all of the Supervisors of Curriculum and Instruction, because although Ms. Kroposki authored that theme, it took the collective effort of the entire Curriculum and Instruction Department to ensure that it was a success. The other directors, Dr. Howard's team, also chimed in to support that. Obviously, Dr. Bramley in special services, everything regarding special services through our ESY program, we were awesomely pleased to be able to provide that support in our ESY program. And so one of our curriculum instruction supervisors specifically focused on special services, Shontae Middleton did an awesome job of making sure that those lessons were scaffolded in a way that were relevant for our students. We had our engineering teacher, if you recall, we had a year or two ago, two years ago, we had our students focus on creating projects to reimagine our boardwalk. And at that time, through the Engineering Academy, our students recreated the boardwalk using dioramas. So what you'll see over there are two replicas of a nightclub, I believe, one is supposed to be the Turf Club, and I forgot what the other one is supposed to be, that has a light up. And through our engineering program, working very closely with our students in the after, in our Summer Steam Academy, our students created the whole replica of the Springwood Avenue corridor where those nightclubs existed.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, for a job well done. Thank you to all those involved.
I'm sorry, was it the Orchid Lounge?
Orchid?
I have to go back and look at the paper.
Look at the notes.
Because they have a different club. I'm familiar with the Turf Club and Orchid Lounge, but this has a slightly different name on it.
Oh, no. They closed. Any other questions, comments?
I'd like to make a comment. With the language program that we have going here, I think everybody needs to be aware that the girl that was valedictorian this year did not speak English five years ago.
Okay, and now it is time for public participation in accordance with Board Policy 0167. If you have a comment, please come to the podium, your name, address, and you have three minutes, please.
My name is Milagro. I work for Asbury Park SDOC. I live in here, I work locally here in Asbury Park. My address, my home address? I live in Neptune.
I wanted to hand these out. I wanted to hand these out so you'll be aware of what I am doing in the community. What I am doing now is I am, I am offering the parents a survey regarding of what's happening in the school so they'll be aware of what's happening. I feel that the parents are not engaging because they have fear. Many of them are educated, but yet they have fear and lack of knowledge of what's occurring. And I want it, basically, most important is, I wanted to know if the parents, are you just going to be offering the ESA? Is there going to be parent engagement with the school offered to help the parents to be involved in what's happening with their children's education? I have spoke to many parents, and their children are failing. And yet they have no one to come and approach in the school that speaks English, Spanish, so they could translate for them. So I just, I know you're doing the best you can, and I know you're doing an excellent job in what you're doing, but basically, these parents are helpless. They need, they need the ESA in place in order to be heard of what's happening with their children. And I wanted to know if you're going to have that in place.
Just wanted to, I just don't, I just.
It's a little confusing.
Right. It's a little bit of a loaded question. I just want to make sure, because you, we limit the time, we have to do that to be fair to everyone. But do you have additional questions as well that you intend to ask tonight, or is that the only question? Because I sometimes ask for members of the public to just ask their questions at once, and then when your time is complete, we can do our best to answer them.
I just wanted to know are you going to be utilizing the ESA or not?
Okay.
Use the mic.
Use the microphone, it's just hard to hear you, I'm sorry.
The children aren't getting the education they need because the parents are not involved. They're not engaging on what's happening, they have no clue. But yet if they have translators in the school.
We do.
They would be offered that high-quality education to that child. That child is falling between the cracks. I speak to so many parents, their children are left two years behind from their grades. And they're failing.
I think the state monitor wanted to ask you a question, and I know the superintendent had a response. Go ahead.
I'm a little confused. Do you live in Neptune?
Yes, but I work here in Asbury Park in the community.
You work in Asbury. And what, may I ask, you don't have to answer, but what is your line of work?
I'm an organizer.
Okay. So you have.
Nonprofit, independent.
Pardon me?
Nonprofit, independent.
All right, do you have a business of translators? Is that?
No, no business.
No? Okay.
A business of trans, excuse me, can you repeat that?
Well, you're making, I'm wondering, we do have, first of all, we do have translators in the school. That, that's something that everybody should understand. They are available, and that includes even the clerical staff that's, that is available for them.
Yes, but I understand, everybody has their, their field of expertise, and these Yes, but I understand everybody has their field of expertise, and these parents are saying every time they come, they, if they don't come, they don't even, they say there's no one available when they reach out to make an appointment.
I, I...
This is what they say.
Okay.
Thank you. So I'll say that I take exception with that comment in that every, this past school year, every school has been equipped in the front office with someone that can provide translations for our parents.
Thank you.
So upon arriving in the building, there is someone present and available to provide translations. In addition, we have a pre-K to 12th grade bilingual involvement specialist who also engages with the parents and the community and provides translation supports throughout the district.
So are you going to answer the question about the ESSA? Are you gonna, moving forward, will you be utilizing the ESSA?
The only thing I'm going to say is that, just because, I mean, and, you know, look, there was, there are always cracks anytime you've, you've serving anybody, it's just part of the nature of, of business, a public entity serving people, but the issue, I think, that you're raising is, is that you say you spoke, you've spoken to a couple of parents who feel this way, but you can let them know, you can let them know what the State Monitor, what the Superintendent just said, that as soon as they walk in the building, there's a person who can translate for them right away, as soon as they walk in the building. So I think you got the answer you need to be able to help us organize that.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? At this time, I will close public participation. State Monitor, do you have a report? Okay. Acceptance of minutes, Mr. Hastings.
Should I have a motion for item 9A and B on A1?
Move it.
Ms. Lozinski? Ms. Breach? Mr. Grillow? Ms. Jones? Mr. LaRocca? Mr. Pinkney? Mr. Saunders? Ms. Satien? Ms. Chavez Anderson? And Ms. LaRocca, did I understand abstain? That's fine, I just wanted to clarify. Yes. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent, would you like to ask for a consent agenda in regards to B-11 1A only?
Before I request a consent agenda, I would like to direct the Board's attention to, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ruiz to discuss the item regarding the music program, the math and music program. Sorry, I'm just looking for that bulletin.
All right, just, I just wanted to point a clarification about the cost of the program, just looking it up on the App Store. It's a free program, actually, to download and try, but then it's a $1.99 cost per month to use the program. So that comes out to about $24 a year for the, to use the program. So it's, it's free to try, and then it's a subscription-based program, so it costs $1.99 per month. So I just wanted to clarify that.
It said $4 per student, correct? Isn't that what?
It's $7, $7 per student for license for a year, yes.
Oh, but it says $4, and you have to look...
No, in the App Store, it's actually, there's no cost, it says you could just press to get it, to download, and then it tells you it's going to cost you $1.99 per month to actually subscribe. It's a subscription-based program in the App Store.
So I just wanted to provide that clarification. That was item, that was the item on page B9.
Yeah, so for us, it would be $7, but anyone who wants to do it independently, it would be about $24 a year.
So Madam President, I would like to request a consent agenda for items on B-1 to B-11.
Could we hold that for one second, please?
Yeah, taken off. Okay, B-1 to B-10.
No, no, B-1, you can, excuse me, Madam, excuse Madam President, B-1 to B-10 and the only number one on B-11, is that correct, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, that is correct.
So number two is being withdrawn from the table. Everybody okay with that? Okay.
No, ma'am, I just wanted to check something before we voted, and it's, it's fine as is. So we need them...
Consent agenda, uh...
Second.
This is all items B-1 through B-11 1A only. Ms. Satien? Mr. Grillow? You're abstaining on B-3K? Thank you.
Madam President, if I could just point out, I just made eye contact with the videographer who's suggesting there's not enough microphones being used this evening, so if we can just press that button before we speak, thank you.
All right, Ms. Breach, it's on to you.
Yes, accept abstain on B-5 for H, B-8 15.
Thank you. Ms. Jones? Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski? Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Chavez Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you, all items carried.
Mr. Hastings, whenever you're ready, would you like to ask for a consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Should I have a motion for all items, C-1, number 1 through C-3, number 8?
Move it.
Mr. Hastings?
Mr. Grillow?
Yes.
Ms. Satien? Ms. Breach? Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski? Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Chavez Anderson?
Yes.
All items carried.
Oh, thank you. Remember September 5th, we are meeting here to do our Board Goals. Ms. Weincoff will be here, so no excuses, everybody needs to be here. Thank you. I understand you'll be the only one exempt then, okay? Thank you very much. I, I need a motion?
Move.
Second.
Everybody say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, good night, thank you for coming out.